June 16th, El Dorado City Commission Meeting to Order, and our invocation will be given this evening by Commissioner Chez.
Y'all pray with me.
Lord Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time that we could come before you and serve our city. We pray for your guidance and your blessing as we navigate through decisions to help improve and maintain the city of El Dorado. We thank you for all these people who come before us this morning or this evening to share their thoughts and their opinions to help us make the best decisions possible. Again, we just thank you for this time and we pray all these things in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim. If everybody please stand in, we'll do the pledge of faith.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any proclamations this evening, so we'll go by that. Do we have any personal appearances? Somebody like to step forward? Or public comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, City Commission, my name is Marlene Rethman and I live at 1153 South Arthur. I am speaking on behalf of most of the, most of those of us living on the 1100 block of South Arthur. There are several issues we would like to address tonight. The first being yard lawn care. Several of us listened to the last city council meeting where home disrepair and failure to keep lawn mow, lawn mowed was discussed. At that time, Mr. Llewellyn stated that all city property was well-maintained. I want to say that is not true. The city owns a property at 1611 West Finney and has owned it since February of 2011. Every year since then, we have had to call and lodge a complaint about the upkeep on the property. This year is no different. A complaint was lodged on Friday, June 13th. The caller was told that it wasn't mowed because of the rain. There are four lots to the east of this property and they are well-maintained and mowed in spite of the rain. The city finally mowed the property on Saturday, June 14th. While we appreciate the quick mow job, it would not pass muster if it was owned by an ordinary citizen. There are still spots where the grass is over six feet tall because the lot is littered with an abandoned car, several trailers, an old refrigerator, et cetera. The property has also, also has Johnson grass and musk thistle on it. Both of these are nauseous weeds. When the property was in the county, they would spray the lot so that it didn't go to seed and blow on our property. We know the house on that lot has been selected for demolition and was used by the fire department for practice. A call was also made to the fire department on June 13th because several windows were broken and left jagged. This was a real safety hazard. They responded immediately and boarded up the window. It wasn't done when they finished practice because they thought the house was going to be razed by this time. We want to thank Chief Stone and the other members of the fire department who responded. Does the city council have a target date for the demolition? Also, the ditch separating the city property from the private lots has been mowed by the owner, but the border around that whole property is never mowed. Our second area of concern is the water that flows down South Arthur whenever it rains. The city often has to barricade the street because the water pools at the south end on South Arthur and it's too deep for cars to make it safely through. We often have branches and trash that end up at this intersection. We have picked up the trash and removed the limbs in the past. We did not do this after the last rain and windstorm and the branches are still laying on the street. We appreciate what the city has done in the north part of town to address drainage issues. We are wondering when better drainage will be coming to the south part of town. Evidently, the drains and culverts are too small to handle the runoff. The runoff drainage ditch on Finney is slanted to the north, so the water pools and becomes stagnant. The city was asked, if I remember right, at the last meeting to help with a similar drainage issue at the Mitchell Trailer Park. I hope the city will look at this drainage issue on South Finney. Our final issue is to thank Mayor Fag for asking the hard questions we would like to ask and have answered. If not for him, we feel a lot of items would be rubber stamped for passage and not to the benefit of all, and I would like to stress, all the citizens of El Dorado. Thank you for your time and listening to our concerns. We will be even more appreciative when we have answers, deadlines, and disposition of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
My name is Jim Johnson. I'm Superintendent of Schools for USD 375 Circle 901 Main in Tuana, Kansas. I'm here this evening with representatives of our school district, including Director of Community Relations, Dick Nybarger, Circle Oil Hill Principal, Miss DeGawith, and parents, students, patrons of our district.
Superintendent?
Yes.
Are we gonna do this now, Herb? Is this okay? Or is this, this is item number five?
Okay. We were not clear whether we should address that on the agenda item or during the open session.
Let's do agenda item. That way we have it all together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five.
Number five. Okay, is there anybody else that, any public comments?
My name is Judy Starant. I live at 105 Ray Street here in El Dorado. I'm president of Kids Need to Eat, which is a nonprofit that seeks to address food insecurity in our community. In collaboration with other community partners, last summer, we launched El Dorado Lunchbox, Summer Meals for Kids. And one of the reasons I'm here is to use this to announce our summer program because I know a lot of people watch this meeting by TV. So last summer, the Lunchbox distributed free meals to kids, and that's to help replace meals that many of these kids eat for free when school is in session and they don't have access to that food when school is up. If kids don't get enough of the right kinds of food, we know that they are more likely to have behavioral and mental health problems, so this is a service to the community. This summer, our program's gonna be for six weeks, through the whole month of July and the early part of August. The six week starts June 30th and ends August 8th because the following week, school begins already. It's gonna be Monday to Friday over the noon hour. This summer will have two locations. One of the locations is going to be the Family Worship Center on South Atchison, which is the old Washington Elementary School. That'll be our primary location, but we also are pleased to say that we're gonna have a passing out meals at the swimming pool park, Forest Park, and we're really grateful to the city for making it available to us. Again, kids under the age of 18 who are in El Dorado can come to either of those two locations, Monday to Friday during that six-week period, and pick up a free lunch, free breakfast food, and free snack foods. We'll have fresh produce to hand out that will be donated by the Nana Gardens, such as carrot sticks and green beans and cantaloupe and wonderful things like that. On Tuesdays, kids also get to take home a free book because we've done some book drives. And then on Friday, they actually take home extra food for the weekend. So our goal is to try to make sure every kid who can, has access to us can have six days of breakfast, lunch, and snack food at a minimum. And then there'll be other things that will be passing out that have been donated. Oh, and most wonderfully, USD 490 is providing bus service, shuttle bus service from their schools and some of their bus stops, such as Quail Ridge Apartments. They're gonna be bringing kids from there and Walnut River Apartments. So details about the program, including the bus schedule, the times and where to pick up the bus, are available on Channel 7 on the slide presentation, but also online at www.kidsneedtoeat.org. It's written as one word, kidsneedtoeat.org. And you can spell that to any way you want, but I own all of those domains. We learned last summer at the end of our program that the way almost everybody heard about our program was through lawn signs. It's the most effective way to reach people who wouldn't have access necessarily to the newspaper and other ways. We worked really hard to strategically place those lawn signs. We had permission from the Parks Department to place them in many of the parks, for which we were very appreciative, and also the schools and other places. I'm first to admit, mistakes were made last summer with regard to placing lawn signs. Mistakes by myself, mistakes by our volunteers, and mistakes by the city. Because I was not always given accurate information in my communication with the city. We know now that the city wants us to get a city permit. No one told me that last summer. We do have a city permit for our lawn signs this summer, and we now have a, we think a better understanding of what the right way is, although we've been giving different information about that. My fear is that the city has overreacted to those mistakes last year by taking a very rigid stance that we cannot put up any lawn signs anywhere on any city property. No parks, no buildings, no bacon lots owned by the cities, no pasture law owned by the city like at the corner of West Central and Griffith. They gave us the city permit and we're gonna be putting up about seven lawn signs, but we can't put them, we can't even put them in Forest Park where we're gonna be handing up the licenses. My greater fear is that the city is trying to punish me for those mistakes, but in the process is punishing the kids who can't get access to this food. The city has refused to meet with me to discuss this. I was told by Herb to contact the city attorney. I've left voicemail messages on his phone. I have sent him emails and he has not returned my efforts to communicate. So I have nobody to talk to and that's why I'm here. Lawn signs are speech. City parks, buildings, and land are public forums, indispensable places for certain communications to be made. The city legally can adopt reasonable time, place, and manner regulations respecting lawn signs and other things, but a total ban on city property is not a reasonable time, place, and manner regulation, especially when it may be the only effective means to reaching many of the low-income families who really need this program. An example, the, there's mobile home parks. And less than, and I have been on the phone nonstop for the last 10 days begging people to let me put lawn signs up on their business properties, particularly at low-income housing areas. But I have to realize how their goodwill. For example, Quail Ridge wanted to let me put up a lawn sign there, but they can't because they have inspection coming. So I mean, is that kind of a thing? When, most logically, you wanna put the lawn signs where the low-income families are that have children who need this food. I could give you the best food distribution program in the world, but if people don't know about it and don't come to it, why should I put all my energy and effort into doing that? So I'm confident of two things. I'm confident that the city is capable of making the distinction between a nonprofit that is seeking to publicize a much-needed free public service and businesses that are making a profit and are trying to sell something. El Dorado Lunchbox lawn signs are not attempting to sell anything. We're not even trying to raise money. We just want people to know, here's a free public service. I'm also confident that through communication, two-way communication, we can come to a reasonable agreement as to key locations where lawn signs are indispensable way of making people aware of this program and the people who need the program. Because otherwise, I'm just left vulnerable to the goodwill of other people who can say no to me and, and even in good faith, say no to me. Like Quail Ridge, having inspection coming, they don't want any, anything extra out. So my request is that the city talk with us and collaborate with us to make free food accessible to as many children as possible this summer, especially those children who need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Judy. Okay, we have anybody else in the audience? Like to, for any public comments?
My name is Tilda Shelton. I live at 114 South Arthur, and I called Friday to get some help out there in our neighborhood. And I was told that because of the rain, they couldn't mow. But when they go out and do a half job, that's wrong. I don't understand when you ask please that we can't get something done. And she was very rude. And when I called Brad, he's more than congenial and happy to take and help me out, like once every Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Judy, I had a quick question. Are you doing okay on volunteers and funding? Just quick yes or no?
I love the question. I think we have a minimum amount of good volunteers, but there's always need for more, especially for the first week, the July 4th week. And the last week, the teachers are back at school because a lot of our volunteers are teachers and they gotta go back to school and can't work the last week. Information about volunteering, including our volunteer form, is on kidsneedtoeat.org. And people can call me, 405-308-9158. And money, we are $500 short, but Kansas Food Bank allowed us to go ahead and place our order. We were much more short than that when we placed the order. So I, if anyone can help with that last $500, even in bits and pieces, we need to try to get that by the end of this month. Thank you for the question.
Is there anybody else under public comments? If not, we will close that portion. We'll head to agenda item number two. Now consider approval of a special city commission minutes of May 28th and a city commission minutes for June 2nd. Is there anything in there, guys?
Mr. Mayor, I move that consent agenda is presented to be approved.
Second. Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number three, public hearing for project number 370, which is a Southwest Quadrant and Sidewalk Replacement Program.
Yes, Mayor. At your last commission meeting, you did set this evening as a public hearing for this project. So we're asking you to hold that hearing tonight and then consider, consider levying the assessments to the affected property owners.
So we will open the public hearing at this point. Is there any comments on that project? Anybody like to come forward? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Karen Holloway.
Mayor, we have to get to the mic before you start.
Karen Holloway, Sunline South Summit. I have a couple of questions about that. With that sidewalk being replaced, no, it wasn't all replaced, but what you did replace, I'm just wondering, when they replaced that, is there any kind of guarantee on how long that should last? I mean, and what caused it? I think the reason why you replaced it was because it lit up, and what would cause that? I just kinda wanna make sure that when this, you know, when I pay for this, I don't have to do it again another couple of years, especially when I didn't even use it. You know, if I used it, maybe I should start charging the people walking behind the house. I mean, I just wanna kinda know about how long this guaranteed.
We're gonna, we'll stand behind it for a reasonable amount of time. If, if there's damage that's done because of the owner or some vehicle's gone over, that's probably a different story, but a lot of the heavings, heaving of the sidewalk was because of trees adjacent to the sidewalk.
There's no trees.
So, so it should last a good while, and if there's some defects from workmanship or, or something like that, definitely give us a holler.
The lifting of first place, I mean, what are some of the causes there?
Soils shrinking and swelling over the years, poor subgrade when it was constructed, too much sand, a number of different things. Thankfully, this is the second large-scale sidewalk project we've done. We haven't had any issues, but feel free to give us a call if something doesn't happen.
And you want to call just?
My office, Engineering Department.
Okay.
Mon Jack, I'd like to know how much of that is the city's responsibility versus the homeowner's responsibility?
Am I paying 100% for that replacement?
What happens is the city pays for all of the removal costs. So we paid for all of the removal, and the city will also pay for any improvements in the intersections. So any of the sidewalk ramps to the streets, any grade adjustments because, to meet ADA requirements. And then the sidewalk that is actually adjacent to your property line is, is your responsibility 100% for the replacement. The city will pay for the removal. The city also spreads this as a special assessment over 10 years, interest-free.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other citizens that'd like to come forward and comment on this project, If not, we will close the public hearing.
What's ordinance number two? Mr. Mayor, I move there ordinance number S. 1331, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, and heretofore authorized by Resolution Number 2701 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments, Southwest Quadrant Sidewalk Rehabilitation, Project Number 370.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Badway?
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number four. This issue is special use permit to allow off-street parking on property located at 107 South Main, case number 14-006, SUP.
I'm Matt Perez, planning zoning administrator. On May 22nd of the, there was planning commission and they recommended an 80 vote for approval. And this is from the last parking lot there. It's the section to the north that it was not under contract. I think it came in under contract like two or three days after the last meeting, so. And then they adjusted the site plan accordingly, add a little bit more landscaping on the east side or the main street side of the sidewalk. And they're asking for approval, or recommendation of approval.
Any questions, guys?
Glad they could do it all.
Yeah, it'd be much better that way.
What's, I'm sorry, what was the ordinance number?
This is G. 1176.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the recommendation of the planning commission to approve case number 14-006-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow an off-street parking lot at 107 South Main be accepted and that ordinance number G. 1176 be approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd like to make a quick comment that I'm excited that the night that we did that, we had that one piece in there that wasn't gonna look right, this is gonna make it look right. I thank Carolyn Markham for that and Dick Morris, all of them getting together. I think it's gonna look a lot better down there. That's my opinion.
I agree with that.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
And Mayor Fag?
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number five, which is a special use permit to allow off-street parking and off-street advertising sign located at 2700 West 6.
There is a little mistake on that. There is no off-street parking.
Off-site. That's what I was wanting to say. So just off-site.
Also, on this May 22nd meeting, planning commission recommended denial of special use permit for the off-street sign, and a vote of four to three.
The, the property is, that Oil Hill School occupies is, is zoned R1. Because of its use as an occupational institutional type use, a special, we determined that to allow a request for a special use permit. Off-site advertising is only allowed in I-1, I-2 districts, Matt?
That is correct.
Correct? And you have to ask for a special use in office institutional. Matt just put up a PDF or an image of the, the application, the sign that was on the application. The lower portion of that, the sign itself, if there is no issue with our current regs, that sign is allowed because of the use of the property. Where the request came in for the special use was the bottom portion that says, this sign is donated by Veris Bank. Staff considers that off-site advertising, and we recommended denial of the special We did have discussions with staff in the school district about maybe other avenues they could thank Veris Bank, scrolling it across the message board from time to time, thanking Veris Bank for their donation, or some sort of placard inside the school. But this was the request as a sign you see before you. And the issue with our regs is it's advertising to the motoring public, and it's, since Veris Bank has no operation or function on the property, we're classifying that as off-site advertising.
And Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
Way in and way out a little bit, too. I had a little different take on the, on the ordinance and the plant, the sign ordinance than the staff, than the guys who do it every day. The way I read it was that the zoning is R1. A off-site sign advertising is not allowed in R1. It's not even allowed to ask for a special use permit. So my thinking is you couldn't even, you couldn't, well, you could vote on it, but you're voting on something that's against the law in the city and you passed the laws, and so it's inconsistent with that. I asked Jim to take a look at it. Jim can tell you his opinion. But so you have, again, zoning staff, you looked at it as its use, and its use is OI. Its use, if we took the use of the land and applied the correct zoning or the zoning that it's being used as, it's OI, office institutional. And so they use that. Well, I don't read that the law says that. The law says zoning and the zoning is R1. And so you can't have off-site advertising in R1 in the city of El Dorado.
Is off-site advertising allowed in OI?
With a special use permit.
With a special use.
And so it is, it's allowed into that zone. And so it is, it's allowed under that zone, but not under the one that's being requested tonight. I guess, Jim, if you would carry it away, and I'd love that.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Herb has correctly stated my understanding of our regulations. And I want to say by way of preamble that I think Scott and Matt have worked very hard, and they have broad authority as zoning administration to try to look at history, try to look at some common sense application, and I esteem them highly for the work that they do. But distilling this down to the technical answer to the question, my reading is the property is zoned R1, and as indicated, there's no off-site advertising permitted on R1. And in point of fact, there's not even within an R1 property the opportunity to apply for a special use permit. I think that it might have been the zoning administrators thinking that should the school seek to change the classification to OI, that their chances of success are nearly 100%. And in that context, they could then use a special use permit process to seek inclusion of the sign under the design that they would prefer. But I think that you're precluded under subsection, or rather Article 10 of your zoning regulations from allowing a special use permit where the proposed use is not authorized by the terms of the regulations, and that's what would be happening here.
Okay, Matt, you want to have a seat? I think some people probably want to make some comments. Superintendent, we're ready for you now. Thank you for waiting.
I'm sorry for the false start there.
No, no.
Well, I guess I'll just go ahead and speak to the reason I came today, and many of the people back here that have joined as patrons and students and members of the school community there. As you know, our school district is currently completing a very nice upgrade in addition to Oil Hill Elementary. The bond project was approved by the voters last year, and we're very excited about the completion this fall. Truly will be an improvement to the quality of life in that section of El Dorado. However, one of the items that was not covered under the scope of the bond was a new sign to the front of the building. The current old sign does not adequately communicate information to our patrons, and it was the desire of the school community there to replace the old sign with a newer, modern version, one that would be more fitting for our new building and enhance the overall appearance of the building and the area. Unfortunately, these signs are very expensive, and the PTA would be selling cookie dough for an eternity to ever collect enough money to purchase one of those signs. That's where our community relations director, Mr. Nybar, came in, and he did approach a local business partner, Veris Bank, who quite generously agreed to provide $30,000 to purchase and install a new electronic sign at that location. Needless to say, we were thrilled. As you know, school finance dollars are very tight these days, and these kinds of business school partnerships are critical, I think, for the future of schools. As is customary with these kind of arrangements, our desire was to recognize our benefactor, Veris Bank, and for their generosity with the illuminated plaque on, on the sign indicating that it was donated by our community partner. There was no intent to advertise a product, interest rates, or any services the bank would provide. This was just the plaque recognizing the goodwill of the bank and their willingness to partner in doing things good for the school. So we applied for the sign permit with the City of El Dorado zoning office, and we were told that our sign was fine, except that the plaque recognizing Veris Bank was off-site advertising, and it wasn't allowed. We were told that we would have to receive a special use permit, and we saw this as merely a hoop that we had to jump through to, to reach a common sense conclusion to it. So we scheduled a meeting with the El Dorado Planning Committee on May 22nd. The notification of the hearing was published in the paper, and my understanding is that letters were sent to the residents in the surrounding area. There were no objections from the patrons at all. As a matter, matter of fact, the only ones that we have heard from are those that are in support of the sign. Again, I would say that the sign is not advertising, but serves as a bulletin board that allows for more efficient communication with our patrons. Prior to the meeting with the planning commission, we did receive a call from the zoning office indicating that the school is currently zoned R1, and it should be probably zoned under nonprofit status like churches and other schools in the area are. Our impression was that the zoning office was going to work with us on this, and that we would be able to get the sign approved. When we arrived at the meeting on the 22nd, however, we discovered that wasn't the case. The zoning office did recommend the denial of the request for a special use permit. We were allowed to speak with the commission, and we did share our views. Initially, a motion was made by one commissioner for approval of our request, but it was defeated by a 4-3 vote, and subsequently, denial of motion was approved by the same 4-3 vote. We were just urged this evening to reconsider that ruling by the planning commission. We truly believe that the big picture vision is being lost in this decision. This is a good thing to benefit the entire community, and these relationships should be allowed. Remember, the sign has been approved. It's only the plaque recognizing our benefactor, Veris Bank, is at issue. We're not advertising for the bank, we're thanking them. They will not make money on their donation to us. It's a gift. They deserve to be recognized just like the benefactors who donate to the Y, or build a hospital wing, or build a football stadium. These are positive relationships to encourage, and we shouldn't narrow our vision in the way that limits the greater good for our community. This is good for the community, it's good for our patrons, it's good for kids and for the taxpayers. These are dollars that will not be taken away from school budgets. Please consider the value of these arrangements for all those that are involved, and I would ask that you reconsider a special use permit for that use of the sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak on this subject? Don't be bashful.
Superintendent? Oh, well, wait till she speaks, and I have a question for you, sir.
I really have more questions than answers, but my name is John Agarby, I'm the PTO president at Oil Hill School. And I've been, I've been there for 15 years on the PTO, and we've done lots of nice improvements of our building. This is one that we thought, you know, we'd really like to do. However, with the, with the way the budgets are going, we feel our funds are better served in the classroom, helping the teachers, helping students who need things, supplies, anything that we can do to make teaching easier. So we kind of put this on the back burner, because as Superintendent Johnson said, it would take a lot of cookie dough to paper this sign. I also see this as just a thank you to Veris Bank, the way it reads that this sign was donated by Veris Bank. I don't see it as an advertisement, and I also don't see the difference, if you mentioned we could scroll, thank you to Veris Bank, how would that be any different than the plaque that's on there? So I just truly hope that you will look at this as a good for our community. Oil Hill has, is, I feel, I mean, I've been there for 23 years, I went to school at Oil Hill, I've been there most of my life, and we've always felt that we don't have our little town. Twanda has Twanda, Benton has Benton. Some people think we're part of El Dorado, some people think we're a private school. So we just, we feel like this is something we can do to build up our community, our area. We have a local business who wants to support us, and I really would hate to see, you know, us not be able to accept that support, because it does make us feel like someone in our community is supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, I have a question if you'd like to. Would the, would the school district be opposed to applying to change the zoning to OI at Oil Hill School?
No, we, we were under the impression that that was something that could be worked out, and, and then when we did get to the planning commission meeting, that was apparently no longer a consideration. So whatever it takes to accomplish that, we're willing to do.
I think, I mean, and I had the same question, so if you don't mind, Nick, I just had another quick question. Is, is the, and I read it in the minutes from the planning commission meeting, or the, is the donation tied to, the ability to build the sign, is it tied to you putting that, that plaque for Veris Bank on the base?
That, that is, that is our doing. They, they did not tie a stipulation to that. Whenever you get a benefactor of that size, though...
I, I agree, and, and understand that I am very much in favor of this moving forward. I think, I think that opportunities in the community to form public-private partnerships, especially as it pertains to schools, will do nothing but benefit the, the kids in those schools. And, you know, like you said, it gives us, gives you an opportunity to spend the money in the schools that need to be spent in the schools. So I'm in, I'm absolutely in favor of this. The reason I ask that question is if, I'm also the, the type of person, I guess, that wants to make, get this accomplished, but wants it to happen the right way. So if we need to go through rezoning and, and make that process happen so that then we can move forward with this permit, that's where I would be in favor of it. And the reason I asked if the money was tied directly to whether or not you could put that sign on there, I, I guess I didn't want it to hold the process up. If they're willing to donate the money, and you go ahead and move forward with building what you need to build, and then you work with engineering and planning and zoning to start your rezone process, and we do that for, you know, we get it, get it rezoned, and then we are able to issue a special use permit, which, I mean, according to Jim, we just can't do today because it doesn't fall within the R1. There's no legal way for us to issue that special use permit today, but if we do it right, then everyone wins.
So is your question whether Veris would be patient enough to work through that process?
That's my question.
Scott, how long the process is?
You will have, you will have another month out to set the planning commission meeting, correct, Matt?
Correct.
And then a month before it comes back to you all.
Well, but again, I mean, and I, I guess I don't want to harp on the subject too much, but it, it's, it's either, if it's a donation from Veris, there's no patience involved. I mean, they're donating the money, and you guys can use it.
Right.
So, so I guess the patience would come on your guy, on, on the part of USD 375. You guys would, your patience in, in being able to build your thank you to them.
I'm afraid that our patience is going to be strained a little bit by hopefully having that done by August 8th, when we're ready for school. Not the sign, just the building itself, so.
I understand.
I, I really don't anticipate that being a problem, that, that, if we had to delay that a couple of months, that, that's something.
And again, I, the reason that I asked about stipulations on the donation is it shouldn't, you should still be able to move forward with the sign.
Yes.
Today, if you wanted to, or if you were able to, and just get to the point where you're zoned correctly, and then you can add your, your thank you sign on the bottom of that base, once we're able to do it the right way.
Do you see any concern with that? Is there a more, is there a more likely?
I'd say let's rock and roll with it, then. I think it's great, I think it's awesome that Veris Bank is, is supporting the school. I think that they're a neighborhood partner out there with you guys. I think it's a good opportunity. And, and again, in my opinion, I'd rather you guys spend your district money on stuff that's directly impact, I mean, directly in the classroom impacting the kids. And so this is an opportunity to use some donations to make that.
And then it would be zoned right.
And it would be zoned correctly, and, and you can move forward from there.
Yeah.
So what would our next step be then?
What?
To get with Scott on?
Staff, the staff will take care of the rezone.
Just going to initiate ourselves, and then there won't be a complaint because it'll be 375, we'll initiate the zone, we'll just do it all ourselves?
Yeah.
There was invited to the area, and then we'll do all that?
Okay.
But we'll do the paperwork.
Okay.
Do the rezone. That's what I'm trying to say.
We'll anticipate that.
That, that means that sound like a plausible path to you guys?
Excellent, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And thanks again to Veris for helping support our schools out there, too.
I'll second that, too. And all that, I, I want to ask the superintendent, was that missed by accident, that sign? Because I noticed you got them over in Wichita, you know, a nice little sign. Was that just missed on the project, not getting it into your improvements by accident? That's, that's my question.
No, I think that's...
Did they just scratch the sign they couldn't?
No, I think the desire for a sign came after the bond issue was elected.
Okay.
Or voted on.
Okay.
So it wasn't calculated into those figures.
I agree with that business school partnership, and that is a good deal, so no question about that. I think they need to be sure and understand what the new zoning part, because when you go from R1 to something else, there's stipulations to that, so make sure that they understand all that.
Okay. This is Scott. Send them.
Yeah, I, I think we'll bring a, if we do this, I think we'll bring a larger scale rezone. There's a lot of properties, we probably need to discuss rezoning, that the use is different than the zone.
Okay, and then on the, on this, is your anticipation doing OI, the rezone first? Because they don't need, then they'll need a special use, and so you'll just, this needs to be?
Tabled.
Tabled, and then revisited by the planning commission after the rezone?
Because the planning commission was, my part of the discussion tonight was what was presented to the planning commission, and Herb's look at it, and Jim's look at it is a little different, so they've heard it from already kind of the use, the OI use.
And if we table it, they don't have to go through the special use process again, right? They can just, it can just come back to us, same?
No, well, I think they ought to visit it again, because as it is today, if you voted on it, if you voted on it like it is presented to you today, it's a super majority. Now, maybe you don't think that's a big deal, but it, it does require four votes. If you have a simple, if, if it passes under the change where it's consistent with the zoning, then it's a simple majority up here. So we can do either, but if, if you just tabled this tonight, and we brought it back after the zoning, with the zoning, so you vote on the zoning first, and then you'd vote on the sign, special use, you're going to be voting, if you vote to approve it, you're going to be voting counter to the planning commission's recommendations, which requires that super majority. Now, maybe, I guess, I think you ought to give the planning commission the opportunity to?
Change their...
Hear it, hear the zoning correctly.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, I just, I'm concerned about timelines, and I, I mean, I want to move this along.
Well, it'll be congruent.
When will the rezone happen? When can planning commission meet again? Are they going to have to resend out letters? If that's the case, then I think we just need to drive on.
Planning commission will hear it next month.
They won't have to resend letters for the special use permit?
We'll have to send letters for the rezone.
But it'll all happen in one night.
Okay.
Our letters will go out soon, so that the two weeks, isn't the two weeks notice, Scott?
Twenty days.
Twenty days. So we'll get those out this week, and it'll be fine, and, and, and then it'll all happen with the planning commission in July and the city commission in August.
That timeframe seem like it'll work for, for you guys?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are ready for Agenda Item Number Six.
So do we need to table it?
You need a motion to table item.
We don't need to vote on the table, do we?
I, I think you need a motion to table.
Okay, all right, somebody want to make a motion?
Are we tabling it, or is it just coming back to us new from the planning commission? I thought that's what we just discussed.
I think, make a motion to send it back to planning commission with the rezone.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we send it back to the planning commission with the rezone and stuff.
Do it again.
Second. With the rezone and special use?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number seven.
Number six.
Number six.
We're, you're going to...
I'll take number seven.
You, you're going to have a series of setting public hearings this evening, and this is getting us prepped for special assessments. Go out, get certified to the county in August, so this is your typical summer thing, is when we're reviewing projects and setting hearings. The first one here is project 358, which is the curb and gutter replacement on the 300 block in North, North Atchison. So we're asking you to set the hearing for July 7th, 2014, here in this room.
I move to set the public hearing for 7:00 PM on July 7th, 2014, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number 358, and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Answer any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item number seven. Project number 386 is complete, and the city commission must set a hearing date to spread the costs to the properties involved. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, Mayor. This, this is a sanitary sewer line to serve the new middle school, and we're asking you to set the public hearing for July 7th as well.
Ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the public hearing for 7:00 PM on July 7th, 2014, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number 386, and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All we're doing is setting the date. I had a question, too, but I'll save that till later, right?
Or, yeah, or if you don't email me or something, maybe I can...
Answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item number eight. Set a hearing date for project 387, pave Wildcat Way.
Wildcat Way was, this was a paving project to serve the new middle school, formerly known as 30th Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the public hearing for 7:00 PM on July 7th, 2014, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number 387, and to further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
July 7th is the date.
Yeah. Agenda item number nine. Set a hearing date for project number 315, a rail spur industrial park.
This was part of the project to serve rail to Barton Solvents and BG Products. We're asking you to set a hearing on July 7th as well, to set, spread the assessments for the improvements.
I move to set the public hearing for 7:00 PM on July 7th, 2014, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number 315, and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item number 10. Set a hearing date for project number 342, industrial park paving, water and sewer improvements.
Yes, Mayor. These were the roads, the water lines, and the sanitary sewer lines, and drainage involved as well, to serve BG Products, Barton Solvents, Pioneer Balloon, and the city of Eldorado with a vacant parcel in our industrial park.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the public hearing for 7:00 PM on July 7th, 2014, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number 342, and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Scott, should we be talking about numbers like in that deal we're just talking about? There's, the city has no exposure from what I'm reading there, so half of it's grant, half of it's improvement.
The city, the city does have assessments as well on this.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll talk about that later.
Okay. That's part of the improvement district cost. The city was included in the improvement district for the vacant parcel, and some carry, carrying costs for the Pioneer Balloon parcel as well.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item number 11. Projects number 416 and 417, which is paving 4th and 5th Street.
Yes, Mayor. We went out to bid on the paving of 4th Avenue from Boyer Road to School Road, and the paving of 5th Avenue from Boyer Road to School Road. If you remember, that road was petitioned in by the property owners, who carried a petition and received the vast majority of the property owners in the improvement district, signatures requesting the improvements. It is a rare occasion. I think it's only happened a couple times, but my estimate was a little low bid, unfortunately. My estimate was at $573,112.75. Cornejo and Sons' bid was $636,195.25. AIPAC Kansas' bid was $735,256. We did see a, quite a surprising increase on asphalt, estimated around $70 a ton, and did receive bid prices up to $92 a ton. Another portion of this is, once design began on this project, we did add some storm sewer as well. We were hopeful that we would be able to carry that increased scope of work with what the authorized amount was already authorized at. We were unable to do that, though. So tonight, we're asking you to consider revising two separate resolutions. One of them was 2717, the other 2716. Those were resolutions, authorizing the project and authorizing the funding available to those projects. And then we're also asking you to consider awarding the contract to Cornejo and Sons, since they did submit the lowest and best bid. We feel that in reviewing Cornejo's bid, that they did give us a reasonable bid for the work we, we were planned to receive, and did have discussions with them as well. It, it doesn't have often, happen often, but this is one that we kind of shot a little too low on, and with the increased scope of work, from the authorization through the design process to the letting, did add to the size of the project. Staff does feel that we should probably move forward with this project. We don't anticipate any cost savings by holding off any time at all, and there's really nothing that we could cut out of the project to help lower those costs as well.
Scott, when you talk about storm sewer, the additional stuff with that?
Yes, sir.
Are those people actually paying their storm sewer?
They are not.
So this is extra cost?
Extra cost on the city at large.
Okay.
And, and, and what we, as a practice, what we have always told the people on their petitions is, we're not going to exceed that amount we gave you. We estimated to you in the beginning. We feel we can stay within that number, definitely, but we do have increased costs with the storm sewer, and the city would have to bear a little more responsibility with the increased cost of asphalt as well.
We look at our capital improvement plan, and one of them is scheduled for 2015, the other one's 2016. How about our funding, you know, coming back this way, that much money? Is that an issue?
I don't believe so. We, really, the scale, we, we learned when we did 3rd and School, we waited a year and kind of combined those projects, and the economy of scale, having a larger project, kind of, you get those better bids. Just, just alone the mobilization, we bid an item called mobilization, and that's just for the contractor to be mobilized to the site. And we do that to get bare material costs, so we can really understand what a ton of asphalt costs us, what a foot of curb costs us. And on this project, you have a $50,000 mobilization cost. So if we split those, you know, apart, or maybe did a portion one year and another, you're just increasing, there's more mobilization involved, there's less volume of work there, so those unit costs go up as well, for profit and overhead.
Would you want to talk about that, Herb?
I, I agree with Scott. Every time we delay a project, the money saved is a ten month. All you bought was time, you didn't buy any, the, the project goes up more than inflation. And so, and just like this, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about Tuanda, $60 a ton. Today's bid, $90. And so, there's such volatility in oil, that I think, I think it is not going to get cheaper. It may be worth doing concrete. Last time asphalt was this high, we did a concrete street, but same amount for, about seven.
Little bit, yeah.
So we may look at that, and I think that, the surprising thing for me is, or not, yeah, is surprising, pleasantly surprising, is that the momentum from 3rd and School is what's driving this.
It was a little different than when we first discussed you all initiating this project, to actually having these property owners petition and say, we want this work done. And I think that's, as a practice, always been treated a little different than, than the commission initiating the project.
And then, again, the CIP, that, these are all in the CIP because it was required when the city annexed it. You had to come up with a plan, you had to present a plan to bring the same level of services to that community and provide it. And so, my anticipation was that we would initiate, and people would petition out. But I think that what you've seen is, people want, have seen what a good street looks like, and they've decided they want it. And so that's why it's here, right, because the people there decided it in one way.
Is there anything on the capital improvement plan we need to bump? You know, if we do 4th and 5th Street, and we do Tuanda Street? You know...
We, we reset our long-range plan for bonds and interest every year, and so this has been factored into that, but I can't, I can't tell you tonight what I think, but the only, you know, I, I know that our bond and interest fund payment is lower than it has been normally, but you are doing projects, and you can issue a debt. You pay some off, and you get some doing. But we are low. I think this, I think the 2015 budget year, and again, I'm working on memory, I think that the bond and interest did go up a mill or two, the, the net like you mentioned.
And routinely, Tammy and myself will get together and look at these projects, and look at the next bond issue, and talk about the dollar amounts, and look at that impact. And, and fortunately, we ever, ever had to discuss, we needed to set that back in the CIP because of our levels, but we do routinely discuss and look at those numbers, based on projects that are underway, projects that are in development, or projects that may just happen in two, three years.
Guys, you got any questions? I'd like to make a comment. Mr. Norris, if you weren't proactive on this, this wouldn't be happening, so you'll be happy to have a street, won't you?
I'll be glad.
Resolution number? I move that resolution number 2736, a resolution amending and supplementing resolution number 2717, which determine the advisability of the making of certain internal improvement in Eldorado, Kansas, paving of 5th Avenue from School Road to Boyer Road, improvements, project number 417. And, do we do them both?
You, you'll, you'll read them both, then we'll get a second.
Okay. What's the other resolution number?
2737.
I knew that. I move that resolution number 2737, a resolution amending and supplementing resolution number 2716, which determine the advisability of the making of certain internal improvement in Eldorado, Kansas, paving of 4th Avenue from School Road to Boyer Road, improvements, project 416. Second.
Okay, so we got a motion, two motions, and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move that as Cornejo and Sons has submitted the best bid for the project numbers 416 and 417, of $636,195.25, that the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Agenda item number 12. To receive the petition of project number 447, paving Tuanda Avenue from Haverhill Road to Constant Creek.
Yes, Mayor. We have received a petition from a, a majority of the property owners along Tuanda Avenue to improve that section of roadway from Haverhill Road to Constant Creek. The signers of the petition are Mr. Donald Adelsberger, Steve Waite, and Fred Krupp. They're requesting that the city of Eldorado proceed with the improvements of Tuanda Avenue. The project as presented tonight is constructing a standard city road, collector road, with curb and gutter, storm sewer improvements, asphalt, and a stabilized base under that roadway as well. So we're here to ask you to either accept the petition and authorize the project, and direct staff to proceed with plan, development, and bidding of the project.
I'd like to thank Mr. Adelsberger, and Mr. Waite, and Mr. Krupp for putting together this petition, and signing it, and submitting it to us. I'm, I think that, I know that we're appreciative of it, I'm appreciative of it, and I know that citizens will be appreciative of it, too, once the road's done, and we're able to get a, get a street. And this covers Tuanda Street from Constant Creek to Haverhill, so it'll be good.
This will be in conjunction with the project that was authorized a while back from Edgemore to Constant Creek. We have seen, heard some interest from the community college about improving their portion of Tuanda Avenue to their westerly border. We'd asked them to hold off a little bit until we got this through y'all, and then proceed with getting them some paperwork on that. Eldorado Township has committed to fund $56,000 towards this project. Butler County, County Commission has committed to fund $25,000 cash and $25,000 in kind. They're currently developing an agreement that they would ask you to sign. We have talked to them about what kind of in-kind work they may be able to provide. I think those discussions may have to go on, because... may be able to provide. I think those discussions may have to go on, because Mr. Lutz and myself were having a hard time figuring out what kind of in-kind services the county could provide on a project like this.
Herb, do you think that there's any will on the county commission to convert that $25,000 in-kind? I mean, if, if we can't find something that...
I, I think that's the direction that county staff is talking internally about. And I think that, I think that, so that's what they're looking at, is what can they do? And then I think Dave and Will will talk about this more, and then they'll go back and talk to the commission. But I think, Scott, sign it up. It's, it's what, what part of this can we do, and how can we, how, how do we effectively interact and provide work in a bid environment where you have contractors in there? How do you, how are you going to manage your work in conjunction with the general, and what he wants done, what he wants done, in, in conjunction with your normal work that you have to do every day? As, as you all have seen, emergencies take us off task. Priorities change. So our priorities will be the community. We look at the world different than a contractor, and a contractor looks at a road in that project. That's his world, that's priority.
Right.
And so, I think that that work needs to be sorted out by the county, and, and then if they, I think if they can come up with a way that they think they can effectively provide, I think that their staff will report that back to the commission.
You know, I think that, I'm kind of disappointed that Commissioner Chapin couldn't be here tonight. I know that this is a project that he has really been passionate about since he got on the commission. I know that this is a project that a lot of people in our communities wanted to happen for a long time. You know, we started bringing people together again last year, and then, and then even as, as recent as a couple of weeks ago, had a lot of entities at the table talking about this, trying to find a collaborative way to make this happen. It's then that we really got a good sense that the community college might have some interest in, in moving on west from Haverhill as well, which, which I think will benefit everybody. Interest from the county, and certainly the collaborative partnership with, with the township, and then again with the landowners. And again, I can't express enough how appreciative I am that it's gone through this process with Mr. Adelsberger, and the Waites, and with Mr. Krupp, to, to make this happen. I'm very appreciative of that. I think that opportunities to collaborate within the community, with our neighboring communities, it's a good opportunity to be a good neighbor to, with the township, and with the county. And, and we were able to really bring everyone together to come up with a, a solution that's going to benefit, 7,000 vehicles a day, is that what hits that road? It's going to benefit everybody, everyone in the community, in El Dorado, in the township, and in the county. So, again, I want to take an opportunity to thank Commissioner Chapin for all the work he'd done on this, leading up to this point. We had an opportunity here, and we seized on it, and this is what collaboration can do. So I think that this is a good example to the citizens of the township, of the county, of El Dorado, and a good example to the governing boards of all of these, that when we take the time to find a way to, to work together, we can make some things happen. So, I appreciate the work the staff has done on this as well.
Scott, I got a question on the petition. It said method of assessment was .0855 per square foot within the improvement district. How'd they come up with that number?
It was a, we came up with eight point five-five cents per square foot, based on, one of the factors was looking at the amount of money we anticipated that the township might be able to come up with. And the county commission throwing some money in as well, the city at large, at that time paying a portion of the southern half, and in discussions with the property owners as well, where, where their level of funding would be at for this project to complete it.
Chase or Nick, you got anything you want to add to it?
I'm just tickled it's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, Bill said it pretty well. We appreciate everyone's collaboration and the effort made by staff, and, you know, Dave, and I know Mike, you've all put in some effort, trying to get everyone to come to the table, and something that's needed to happen, and we're glad to see it going somewhere.
Get my daughter off my back about it.
I, we don't live in a perfect world, and I know one of the things that I would like to have done is been able to sit in when we talked about this petition, because I think we could have maybe negotiated different. And this isn't going to be perfect. So, I am proud to live in El Dorado with getting this thing done. This needed to be done for years, so I think all of us live in this town, and it's time for this to happen. And I wrote a whole list of thank yous. Number one, I want to thank the sixty-some people that paid for the three-block area. You know, they're the ones that kicked this off and got it going. And I know that's going to be very tough on some of them, but the rest of the city's going to be there with you on, on what goes on with that. The second person I want to thank is the, the county commissioners for the $50,000 towards this project. They voted five-oh. I'd like to point out that all five of the commissioners voted for this. So I think that's a statement coming from them. I'd like to thank Dana McCoy and the, and the El Dorado Township, they've been on this since the very go. I'd like to thank Fred Krupp for this too. Because I know when I look at this, Fred, and I did in this petition, you're paying $3,500 more than the rest of them on the north side of the city, the street. We take what you're putting versus everybody else's on the north side. So you, as far as this agreement's doing, your share of this thing. And I just wanted to tell you thank you on this thing. If I remember right, I was reading up, it was like $42,000. So, I want to be sure and tell you thank you for that. And then also, a thank you to the city at large that will pay the lion's share of this to get this done. I think this is, most people I've talked to in town, no matter where you live, understands this needs to be taken care of. So, this is a proud moment for all of those commissioners, for staff, for the community, for something to happen that needs to happen. And this is going to be curb and gutter.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, full, full city street, curb, gutter, stormwater.
Yeah, so we're not, it's going to be, it's going to be done right.
And I think as we started talking about this, more in depth at the commission level, for me, as we talked about, as we weighed the different options, overlays, and 21-foot wide streets, I was uncomfortable moving forward with some of those projects. I felt like it's a street that needed to be, and I think all of us did at times, felt like it was a street that needed to be brought up to full city standards, if we're going to maintain it in the future. And so I'm very proud that this was, that everyone was able to come together and make this happen. So I, I think that hopefully it'll be a beacon on the south side as you drive down, drive west towards the college, have a nice street to drive on. So I drive it every day, I'm going to be very grateful when it's fixed. What's resolution number ten?
Twenty-seven thirty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number two-seven-three-eight, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, paving Tuanda Avenue, Haverhill Road to Constant Creek.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thanks again, Fred.
That was good.
Motion carries four-zero.
You've all got that right in the first place, it's been happening a long time ago.
We got it now.
Got it now, yep.
Thank you.
We're not fast, but we usually get it right.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is IM thirteen, new business discussion items. We would like to start seeing through.
I have, I have a quick question, that I wanted to see if we could get some clarification on. With summer months here, it's, it's a little bit more prevalent, but I've had questions from some of our local retailers in regards to the status of licensing and sales tax of vendors that pull into town and set up along six, or I'm sorry, along Central and along Main Street, just different areas, where they just open their trailer, and whether they're selling produce, or hats and t-shirts. I'm just curious how all that works within, within our code, and how vigorously we police that and, and collect sales tax.
Pat, you actually, don't you sell those permits?
I do.
Do you know that off the top of your head?
I say, I can tell you that we collect information on the sales tax ID numbers for each vendor that comes to town, as part of the background check and fees that they pay here for their permit. We do check the sales tax collections, to see if these people have paid. I, I don't know what our, I don't know how far we can go after we check with the state to see if they've paid. I don't know how far that process goes, but...
Well, and don't we charge, if you want to come in one time, or for a week, it's $500, is that right?
It's $50 per day, and 500 for a year.
Okay. And so that's what the fee is to come. When they set up, we do check. If we see them, we do send someone out, and, and we do get a lot of phone calls. People ask us that same question. We do check sales, we, we check to see if they paid something to sales tax. And I won't say we're perfect, but I will say, we do, we go through those steps.
So, $500 a year, and I can set up shop for 365 days, someplace around there?
Yes.
When, when is the last time that we evaluated that, that, that fee that we charge, and...
I, I don't know for sure when that fee was put into effect, but myself and the police chief have been working on a new...
Fee structure.
A new fee structure for that, as well as possibly a new application to help us better follow some of those people.
And this is a transient deal, so these are out of town, okay. You know, I mean, the reality of it is, the reason I'm asking this question is because, I think all of us are, I'm a big supporter of our local businesses. And I know that our local businesses that are in our brick and mortar downtown pay a lot more than $500 a year to rent space, and they pay property tax. And we, you know, we collect sales tax from them, so they contribute a lot. And I feel like, in my conversations with, with quite a few of those retailers, I mean, there's a little bit of, a little bit of angst, because these traveling vendors can come through and not pay property taxes, not contribute to, pay trash fees, and, you know, everything that we have to, that we have to pay to be a business in this town or a resident. So, I, I guess commissioners, fellow commissioners, I'm curious if you guys would be supportive of continuing to review this, and better understand what we can do to...
I, I should note that the produce vendors aren't required to pay the fee.
I understand that, I'm talking about...
The others are.
Black velvet pictures of Elvis.
T-shirt vendors, purse vendors, and we've got, we've got, and here's, you know, we've got a couple of businesses right downtown here, that are selling, you know, that sell purses, and sell those accessories, and then to have, and, and they're paying their taxes, and they're paying rent on their buildings. And then to have these vendors just come through with a trailer and sell the same thing, and not have all that overhead, they're undercutting our local businesses, and, and that's not fair to our local businesses, so...
Are selling pretend same thing.
Right, pretend same thing for the most part.
I think we should definitely look at it. I mean, I, I think that would be a good move.
I think the, the niche and boutique shops that we have downtown are great, and, and I think that these vendors that come through town jeopardize our ability to keep those shops in business. So, I'd like to look at it. I'd like to have staff look at it tomorrow.
Okay.
Do you guys have any objections to them?
Nope.
Okay. And that's all I've got.
I had a, one real quick thing, and two plugs. One, if you guys don't mind checking kind of the communication regardless of that Arthur deal, and just get back to us, I'd appreciate that. And then maybe if there is any compromise, or possibility with Judith, maybe get back to us on that too. But, if you don't mind.
And I think that the, the thing about Judith's letter, you all saw it, she talked about going to court.
That we're violating her First Amendment, so I'm, I think you did the right thing by sending her to our city attorney.
Right. And so, and I, and so, her, we'll...
Okay.
We'll, we'll work on it. And then on South Arthur, I'm, we've done work down on that creek, I know we have. As far as that house, guilty as charged, it was depicted accurately, we forget it. We don't do as good a job. I mean, it's truly a case of, what's good for the goose needs to be good for the gander. I agree 100%. I'll plead guilty to that, and we'll do, and we'll do a better job. And the timeline on that house, I talked to Brad about it today. I didn't want to take him off work, he's currently due, but I'll tell you, it'll be done this summer. And if that's good enough for you, that's my plan, get it done this summer. But I, I plead guilty. It's, it's, when we, we took, we took it over, didn't we?
We took, we took it quite a while ago. It was a structure in the floodplain, had all kinds of issues.
Yeah.
But it was a structurally sound house, and it was secure.
What was that story?
I can't remember all that.
But it has junk on it, I agree. There's a car on it, I mean, there's an old Mustang, I mean, there's stuff.
The fire department's used it.
It was a bathtub, I mean, it's, there was an icebox, I was going to talk, I thought she beat me to it.
No, and I, I...
Is it safe, I mean, the fire department went over and put the boards up, we think it's, I mean, is it...
I, I haven't been out there, but we'll go out in the morning, and I'm sure someone else, I know Sarah had been out there, because she was the one, I believe, who received the complaint Friday, and then dispatched the mowing units Saturday morning to get it mowed.
And I, without looking at it, don't know what property we're talking about, but...
It's, if you go down Arthur to where it hits Benny, so that tee, if you just keep going straight, it's straight.
Okay.
And you'll see a fairly new house, I think he relocated it. Didn't he build the basement and relocated it or something?
It was a home from the west, the east side of the middle school, I believe. It was a home that was moved from there, when they, when the school swat, swiped properties with the hospital. It was one of those homes that got moved.
And, 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 I mean, it's absolutely right. We've been going to tear it down for a long time, and it hadn't made it to the top of the list, and, and it's, and I agree.
So we'll get done this summer?
We will do it this summer, and we're guilty as charged. We should have done it in the past, we just haven't done it.
Thank you.
And I will say, the mowing too, it, it does look pretty hacked up from Sarah's description this morning to me. Our tractor did get stuck, I believe, multiple times out there Saturday trying to mow it, so...
Well, I'd say the quicker the better. But, thank you.
Yeah.
Then real quick, I just have two quick plugs. Friday night is Relay for Life, that's going to be at East Park this year, starting at 6 o'clock, and they'll go till 6 a.m. I know typically you got to be on a team, but anyone that would like to come down is more than welcome. They've really been struggling, I think, the past couple of years to try to keep that event going. And so, it's a wonderful, we did it last year, Chief Zeeman and I, and we had a good time walking, and there's a lot of good people, and a good way to honor those who have went through the cancer fight. So if you have nothing going on, come down Friday night. And then also, this next Monday, a week from tonight, El Dorado High School has a pretty unique program with the Fine Arts Department, and Katie Banks. She's, I think, done something that's pretty special for a community our size, in the region that we are, and has given a lot of children some unique opportunities. And so they're going to be doing their annual fundraiser, which will be a dinner downtown, and then there'll be a performance at El Dorado High School at 7:30. And you can just get tickets at the door to that. But she'll be performing. For those that don't know, Katie was on Broadway and spent many years in Phantom of the Opera. Daxton Blumquist is coming back, he's currently on Broadway, an EHS grad, and he's in The Book of Mormon, which is a big show. Nick's daughter Becky will have a little cameo in there, she'll be playing the cello for Katie. Anyways, it'll be a cool night of entertainment, and... Anyways, it'll be a cool night of entertainment and, and it's a, a really neat program that, again, typically a community our size in this area wouldn't have and it was kind of fun this morning. I opened the New York Times, or I opened it on my, on my phone and there was an article about Alex Graves, who is a graduate from El Dorado High School and is one of the directors in Game of Thrones, which last night was the season finale and he directed that episode. And I'm not gonna say any spoilers, so, no. But anyways.
Last episode last night?
Well, of the season. And so anyways, he covered that, but Alex directed that and Alex graduated from El Dorado High School and so there's been some cool things happen through that program. Katie doing it now and back when Alex was in it, it was Michelle, Katie's mom. So the Banks women have kind of helped us out through some of that. So anyways, if you can support it, of course, that's a program that tends to get lost in some of the dollars. So they'd appreciate anyone coming out to the show. It'll be a good show. And that's all I got.
And he took mine, so that's all I've got.
Well, I'm surprised that Commissioner Chase didn't bring up the Flint Hills Symphony. Would you like to talk about that, Chad?
I could. I, uh, it was an incredible event, obviously, for those who've never experienced it. It is one of the most, more unique events, I'd say, in the state of Kansas. I know I was tickled that it finally came to Butler County. And it was, it was, it was windy as can be and I know they had some struggles navigating through that. But they did a great job and it was a beautiful event. Kudos to the CVB and their work on kind of creating some uni- unique events to go along with that, to get people to try to come into town and spend some time in El Dorado. It was fun. I probably had too much fun, but it was a good time.
Chase, you might mention City of El Dorado Water was the official water of the event.
Thank, oh, I'm not gonna steal Mike's.
No, no, I had a guy stop me today, Kirk, that said, I just want you to know I drank some of the best water in Kansas from El Dorado.
And that was.
At this event, so that's.
And another unique thing that I think Julie probably, I think you did the story on Walters. Walters Flowers, for anyone who doesn't know, is one of the nice, I mean coolest things that we have in this town, but Harold and Linda, I mean, blow me away all the time. But anyways, long story short, they got, I think, three weeks out? They got, yeah, six weeks? They got a kind of short notice that they needed to prepare, I'm not telling this well. Hundreds of flower arrangements.
The one they contracted with, the guy got sick or something and couldn't do it.
Yeah, and so anyways, I thought it was cool. Julie did a nice little story on, on that, but of course Walters came to the rescue again and created a lot of huge, beautiful works of art, as they always do. So it was altogether a really cool night. And if anyone ever has an opportunity to go again, of course, I hope it's back in Butler County sooner than later. But you should take the chance at going because it's really something special for the state. All those people that say Kansas isn't pretty haven't been out to Flint Hills. And that's all I got about that.
Seven thousand people north of Rosalia. I know on Saturday I ran into some people here in town that was from out of town, Blue Springs, that was volunteering out there. They couldn't say enough nice things about our community, so.
Saw a lot of.
Sometimes we take some of our stuff.
Lot of out of state tax, I noticed on Saturday.
Yeah.
Didn't know where, be curious where they stayed, but hopefully that hung around.
That had to be good for our economy. I don't know what numbers, but that had to be. Well, I think, I mean, I talked to Jennifer, I asked her how it went. She was all positive about everything that occurred and 'cause we had the art show too and we had the dinner out at the college and that was well attended and I think last week she said every hotel room was pretty much booked and I don't know what that exactly means, but if all the hotels were full, that added a bunch of people ate and drank.
Yeah.
Slept here.
Okay, I know you've been gone, Herb, but you probably haven't had a meeting with the Legion yet, have you?
I have not.
Would you please work on that when you get done? The bump on North Main, that's still, I don't think's been where we need to be, Scott. And I don't know, can we take some sales tax money to fix that?
North Main?
I'm talking about the bump that we put some stuff into.
Yeah, and what we.
We ground it.
Ground it down and then put a little bit of patch in and.
It's, it's still, you just sit and watch cars go through that and it's still like going across railroad track, in my opinion. Now, I'll go around the side of it and it's better, but you gotta go out of your lane to do that. So that's just my, and I think there'd be some people agree with that.
My, my, my feelings on it, if you stay within your lane and.
Yeah.
Travel and it's, it's smoothed, it's transitioned the bump out a little, make it a little less.
Where exactly?
You know, hard hitting.
I go down North Main a lot, every day. Where, where is this exactly? I've heard about it.
On the south edge of Dog, Wag, Tail or what, that?
Oh, okay.
And so it's on X south, but on the south between that piece of property and the north piece, north line of the hotel, on the west side of the road.
There's, there's a.
Outside lane?
There's a manhole pad.
No, in.
North Main, it's outside, it's West Line.
Yeah, yeah, West Line, yeah. That's right. And what, and the fix is, we excavate, we raise the box and put an angle on it.
Yeah.
And then, and then rebuild it all.
Unfortunately, a lot of those boxes, when they're originally installed, when the roadways were widened, were put in flat. Not a lot of thought was put into the crown of the road or the potential crown of the road. A lot of times when you do a mill and overlay project, you, you wanna try to put as much crown as you can in the road to, for, that's safe for the motoring public to get the road off of that asphalt, to get into that curb and gutter. And, and when you encounter something that protrudes out into the driving lane that far, that's basically has zero slope at all, you try to transition the asphalt around it the best you can. There's actually some of those, the mill and overlay we did on Main Street here recently completed. But you, you wouldn't notice them because most of them are within the parking areas of the pavement.
I thought this was an AT&T.
It's, it's a storm sewer manhole. It was originally thought it was an AT&T manhole. It is, it is one of ours.
I thought I'd heard AT&T once.
Mike, before I agree with you, I'm gonna go look at it, 'cause I've honestly never.
Well, you, you, if you guys drive north or south, on the outside lane on North Main, you'll.
Next to the Dog deal.
Right across from Stardust Harbor shop.
I'll do it in the morning.
Okay. Be sure and go to the speed limit when you hit it.
That van won't go much faster.
Okay. No, it's perfect. It's really perfect effect, a motorcycle. If you're on, if you're only on two wheels, I can see that it would be a much worse bump than if you're on four. 'Cause you kind of straddle it. I mean, until, until you brought it up, I mean, I drive it every day. I never even noticed it. Because it's not, because it's not the only manhole in town. This is probably the worst manhole in town, maybe not, but it's not, it's not, it doesn't have the market cornered on that. Okay.
Six in Maine, I was talking to a guy, what's the radius of that corner? And I didn't know what a radius was till I got talking to this guy.
I wanna say seventy-five foot, but don't hold me to that. I'd have to look again. Maybe seventy-five or ninety foot.
Check into that.
'Cause a typical, typical radius like you have out here is a twenty-five foot radius and.
And I think it started off as forty-five and we've made it.
Seventy-five or, yeah, it's, it's a big, it's a large radius. And what the radius is, is you consider where your curb quits going straight and you have that point of tangency and that distance and that's the arc of your radius, so that's the distance.
Okay. Well, I, I was hoping the staff, I, I still think that we move the line over to the last two lanes going west. That's one option and option two is we talk to the landowner and work out a deal to cut back into where those tire tracks are. And I know that's an issue with the storm sewer there. But I, I just somehow we need to fix it. That just looks bad, in my opinion.
Well, I think our plan right now, I mean, right now is to excavate in between the two ramps and fill that in with concrete. And so it's probably, I think we thought red stamp, didn't we? And so again.
To accommodate ballards in the future.
And then put that in, see what happens and then the ballard, and to accommodate if there's a ballard there or if there's one on the north side of that east-west ramp. But the, so that's our plan right now. We, we think it, we agree, it looks bad and that's our, I mean, I know we're doing that and I.
It, it does look bad and it's holding water, but I can say, after all this rain we've had for quite a while and me kind of really paying attention to it, I really haven't seen the mud tracks like early on. It seems like it's being navigated a little better than it was when, they're getting a little more used to it.
And I think you're gonna always have a problem with some drivers don't, aren't very good drivers. And so no matter how big it is, someone's clipping that corner. I mean, we see it right out here on Vine and, and it's huge. And so you're gonna have, and then, like I said, the state, they, they send road trucks that have no business driving in El Dorado right through it. And so no matter what we do, a superload's not going around any of our corners. And, and in fact, you see it. They just ignore the truck route and drive right through town. And so, so we're, we're never, we're always gonna have someone driving over it. But no matter how big it is. But I, but we're gonna, we're gonna fill that middle in.
Yeah.
And so that's on the.
Okay.
Timetable.
This summer sometime?
Yes, sir. And I think it's actually on the list.
Yeah, and talking to Brad, it's, it's on his list, so.
Okay. And so probably not too long.
West Central Mowing has some properties. There's a, like one property out there that hadn't been mowed this year.
The old errands?
Well, they did mow errands and look nice, but needs mowed again.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Which, who?
This would be right east of there, the big open lot. There's fire item and stuff there.
Okay.
So.
I'll ask about it.
And, and the other thing was, I noticed that they, the city probably did go mow out there at the old Ford place for the carnival. That looked really bad in front of that carnival deal out there.
In the ride away.
In the ride away. Somebody mowed that, but it still did get trimmed and then looked, and there are some branches laying around in there too. Now, I don't know whose responsibility that is to pick up, but that looked kind of trashy there, in my opinion. And out on West Central then, is, are we gonna try to do something with that corner for Community National in? You think, Herb, or?
And I haven't talked to Colin anymore since we fixed it. Uh, I haven't talked to him since.
You fixed it and they just run right through it?
That night.
So, yeah, so it's gotta be something different then.
Yeah.
Okay. We'd like to have a copy of that five percent investment that you say we got on lake debt.
Did you, you haven't done that yet?
If you get time, just do it for me.
We got it and then we were gonna talk to the bank to clarify a couple of them. And I am sorry, I think that we forgot last week, so I will do that tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm gonna end on a thank you. I wanna thank the ladies on the crew for taking care of the flowers. I had two compliments from people out of town that was coming to town for what she was talking about, Chase, that talked about how nice our flowers looked and our community looked on the bridges and downtown and I want you to pass that word of thank you on to them, 'cause they're, that's a hardworking crew.
That is, I'll second that.
That's all I got.
And I didn't have anything, Mayor.
Well, it's just great.
You got bicycle stories to tell us?
You know what? I, I can, I'll just be short. The day one tornado and then rain.
The first day of the ride, there was a tornado?
First day of the ride. And so it's the first time that, you know, I've seen the movies when you can't see the tornado and you just see the dust around the bottom, well, I gotta see it live. And then, and then it rained and I only got a little bit wet the first night and then the second night and, and of course the wind was at our face. And then the second day winds at our face. All year long, the wind is, actually, I got Kurt here to tell you about the windmill. Actually, I'll put, unless you all wanna hear it, I'll put it off 'cause Dave was the one who asked to hear about it. Day two, wind at my face and rain and then sun came out enough to get hot when I was going up a hill. And so I appreciated that. And then it rained on me again that night and my feet got wet and the tent leaked. And then the third night, wind in my face again and, and it rained and about half of my sleeping bag and my blanket got wet. Then the third night, ten o'clock started getting wet and the fire department came out at ten and said, you need to all go indoors because it's gonna be seventy mile an hour wind, you're gonna get blown away. Well, the group I was riding with are called the Geezers. And when the fire department came around and told everyone that it's gonna storm and you need to go inside, the Geezers had a conference and talked about what they're gonna do and the decision was made that the Geezers are staying out because it's not gonna be as bad as Paola in oh-three and Overbrook in ninety-seven. And so I stayed out and at ten I started getting wet and at about probably two, when the wind has my tent pretty much sideways. And, and that was an interesting experience. I've never had that before. I went to roll over and when I put my hand out, it splashed and, you know, not a good sound in a tent. And so the next day. Huh? I, I do need a better tent. It's thrown away. It was picked up by our trash today. And the, the next day, just to make sure that I understood the weather in Kansas, after we left Larnier, I'm riding on a flat piece of road. The wind was so strong and the rain and the sleet coming so hard, I was in the lowest gear on my bike, struggling to go about five mile an hour. So, that said, that's the bad. I loved, I loved, the people were just phenomenal. It, both the people in the ride and the people in the communities, you know, when we rode into some of these towns, we effectively doubled their population. And so a- as you, as you, is actually, as I expect out of people in Kansas, they embraced us and were fun and, and fed us and and so I will do it again because the wind cannot be out of the northeast every year. And, and actually, I think everybody said this was the worst it's ever been. And if it's bad again, the next time I go, I will ask them to pay me to not go anymore. And so I enjoyed my ride and I will do it again, even though the weather did not go up rain.
Well, that's Kansas.
Yep, but out of the northwest for days and rain every day in June, what is that about?
I'm sorry, but that just sounds miserable.
Well, the, the riding in a group is really a lot of fun.
Chase and I had a vote and determined we didn't even wanna drive our car.
Yeah, we, we complained about driving across Kansas, let alone.
But this, the, one of the guys that I rode with is in his, I think he's in his seventies. Most of the Geezers are in their seventies. One of those guys rode a single speed because he could. And it's like, are you kidding me? I needed, I needed all twenty-seven of my gears and it wasn't enough and so.
Sign Bill and I up for next year.
No. It was, it was fun. Anyhow.
Sounds like a ball.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'm here taking my.
Mr. Mayor, move your adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you very much.